Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs. We have two work sessions this morning. Before we begin, I would like to have the committee introduce themselves, and I'll start to my right.
Good morning, Gary Drinkwater, District 121.
Good morning, Jan Dodge, House District 97, representing Belfast, Northport, and Waldo.
Good morning, Justin Fekto, representing District 86, which is west and north Augusta.
And good morning, everybody. I'm Dave McCray. I live in Fort Fairfield, which is up in central Roosted County, and I represent the good people of District 148. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Brownie Carson, representing State Senate District 24. That is Harpsell, Brunswick, Freeport, North Yarmouth, and Pendle.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Representative Heidi Sampson, representing House District 21. That's Alfred Limerick, Shapley, Newfield, and Parsons Field.
Good morning, I'm Representative Henry Ingerson. I represent Arondel Dayton and Lyman, District 10.
Good morning, I'm Shelley Rudnicki. I represent House District 108, which is Fairfield, Mercer, and Smithfield.
I'm Representative Michael Brennan. I represent District 36, which is part of Portland.
And I'm Dick Farnsworth. I represent House District 37, which is part of Portland.
How do you do on Torrey? Cornfield, I represent House District 125, which is part of Bangor.
I'm Rebecca Mallett. I represent Senate District 29, which is South Portland, Cape Elizabeth, and part of Scarborough. Our wonderful committee team includes Jane Denine, our committee clerk. If there's any information that you would like the committee to have, please see Ms. Denine. She'll make sure that we get it. And our committee analyst is Karen Neto. She took really great notes during our epic public hearing and will provide us with a summary. But we are honored by the presence of Erin Dooling, who is the committee analyst for Health and Human Services as well. Just would like to remind folks that this is a work session. This is not a public hearing. We have received all the public comment on these bills, and at this point, it's when the committee begins its deliberations. We may ask for people to come forward for information, but that is through the chair. And I think that that's the full range of information, so Ms. Neto will start.
Good morning. So I'm just gonna somewhat quickly go through the, kind of explain the packet I gave you, and then I think my plan is just to basically go through the bill and explain what it does. And one of the pieces of information I gave you are, on the blue sheet, are the relevant statutes related to the bill. So the green sheet, the top sheet, is just a general bill summary of LD 798, which is an act to protect main children and students from preventable diseases by repealing certain exemptions from the laws governing immunization requirements. And then you'll see a list of information requests, mostly from the public hearing. There were a few additional requests after the public hearing, and I believe you all received an email from Maine Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And also, I believe, someone is here from the University of Maine system to speak to questions you had about university students in particular. The blue sheet are the statutes relating to LD 798 in Title 20A, Chapter 223, Health, Nutrition, and Safety, Subchapter 2, Immunization. And then, starting on page five, is Title 22. It's provisions relating to immunization of employees of healthcare facilities. And then if you go to page 10 of 11, and Title 22, it's a chapter relating to nursery schools and requirements for staff of nursery schools. The pink sheet, or the pink handout, are the jointly issued rules relating to immunization requirements for schoolchildren. These are issued jointly by the Department of Education and the Department of Health and Human Services. And we can get back to this later, but there is, in these rules, in Section 3, provisions which speak to exceptions to immunization requirements. And then on the yellow sheet are the rules relating to immunization requirements for healthcare workers. And then I've also included, the sponsor of LD 798 has put forward an amendment on the buff-colored sheet, so if the committee wants to discuss that at some point, you have his proposal. And then finally, the single-page white sheet at the very end is something that my colleague, Erin Dooling, could speak to. At the public hearing, we did hear a lot of testimony about, that raised constitutional issues in relation to this bill. So Erin is here and available to provide you a brief summary if you want to hear more about that. So I also have, I don't know if Jane's handed it out yet, but this is a summary provided by the National Conference of State Legislatures. You have it?
Yep.
So this basically gives you kind of a nationwide snapshot of exemptions in various states, religious and philosophical. I tallied that there are 48 states with a religious exemption, and three states currently that do not have a religious exemption. And then for philosophical exemptions, there are 18 states that do have a philosophical exemption, and 33 states that do not. The memo, I will say, is dated January 20, 2019, so it's relatively current. However, I do notice that it seems to just provide enacted legislation through 2017. So I think what I'll do now is go through the bill. So if you kind of take your bill out, and also your blue sheet, I'm gonna kind of go back and forth, because...
Ms. Neto, I'm gonna stop you there, because we have to find our bill.
Oh, and among 700 pieces of testimony.
Yeah, so if you'll be in a moment.
Sure. I will see the reason why I, and I know you have your red books with your Title 20A, but...
Excuse me, committee members, it should be right in the back, in the folder.
I have a copy if I need to use mine.
Representative Rudnicki is still searching.
I'm still searching.
Who else is still searching? Representative Ingerson?
Yeah, I don't mind her. I think mine is...
Alternatively, you could bring it up on your computer screen.
Yeah, I'll bring it up on my computer if I have to.
Jane Denine's going to give you a copy. On that end, I think.
I was gonna have it on my computer. It should be... Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't actually in the folder I was looking in. So thank you.
So one of the reasons why, you know, you sort of need the bill with the relevant statutes is, you know, there are sections that are repealing the law, so I thought it would be important to the committee to sort of see what the bill is proposing to repeal. So in Section 1, you see that it repeals Section 6355, subsection 3. So if you go to your blue sheet, page 2 of 11, and you'll see Section 3, 6355, the headnote is "Enrollment in School," and these are provisions that relate to enrollment of children in any public or private elementary or secondary school. And you will see in subsection 3, the philosophical or religious exemption. And so Section 1 of this bill is proposing to repeal that subsection 3. Section 2 of the bill, which is in Title 20A, is 6359. 6359 is, the headnote is "Immunization of Students," and these are provisions relating to immunization requirements for any public or private post-secondary school. So you will see it repeals 6359, subsection 3, Paragraph B. And you'll find that on page 4 of 11 of your blue handout. And again, this relates to religious or philosophical exemption from immunization. And then Section 3 of the bill relates to employees of certain healthcare facilities. So that's in Title 2, Section 802, subsection 4B, and it's repealing Paragraph B. So you go forward to page 8 of 11 of the blue handout, and again, this would repeal the religious or philosophical exemption. And finally, Section 4 of the bill relates to staff at nursery schools. And if you go to page 10 of 11 of your blue handout, it repeals Section 8402, subsection 3, Paragraph A. And then finally, in Section 5 of the bill, unallocated language, it provides that both the Department of Education and Health and Human Services shall amend their rules to remove any rules exempting persons from immunization requirements because of their religious or philosophical beliefs. And if you, in the pink handout, which is the immunization requirements for schoolchildren rule, you will find those exemptions, starting, it's page 1, but it's really the third page in because of the title page, but it's page 1, and it's Section 3, and it continues on page 2.
I believe it's the pink sheet.
Yeah, it's really the third page, but it's titled, it has the page number 2 on it.
One back, so page 2.
And it's Section 3 of the, Chapter 126. It's Chapter 126, the Department of Education, and Chapter 261 for Health and Human Services. But it's Section 3 exemptions. And finally, in Section 5 of the bill, there's language that provides that rules adopted by the Department of Education must provide that a student who is covered by an individualized education plan on the effective date of this act and has elected a philosophical or religious exemption from immunization requirements on or before the effective date of this act may continue to attend school under that student's existing exemption as long as the requirements in those sub-paragraphs 1 and 2 are met.
All right. So, right, okay. So at this point, I want to draw folks' attention to the proposed amendment from the sponsor. It's in a...
Buff.
Buff.
Buff Coke.
Apparently, this is buff. I don't know. It's interpretive. Is the sponsor here? Oh, there you are. Representative Tipping, if you would mind presenting this amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to start out by thanking the committee for all the work they've done on this. I know there's a lot of research out there to come through to get a good handle on the issue. It was an amazing public hearing with a lot of passion, and I appreciate everyone who hung in there. I was right there in the back of the room.
I was gonna say likewise.
I also wanted to apologize. I served on this committee in the 127th, and I still am, don't have a treat for this committee. I know I owe you a box of chocolates. I hope that does not affect the outcome of the legislation. So the amendment in front of you, I also want to thank your analyst, Ms. Neto, for helping put ideas into language. This amendment was meant to do four things, and I'll just run through those briefly. First, I discussed this in my testimony on the bill originally, to make sure that we clarify and, as necessary, broaden the medical exemption so that physicians, nurse practitioners, and physician's assistants, who are the primary pediatric care providers for these children, can make the decision to grant a medical exemption within their best medical judgment, within the confines of their license and scope of practice, not beholden by a legislative committee or a series of rules created without action by the legislature. So you'll see in the amendment, Section 1A, Section 1C, Section 2A, 4B, 4, sorry, Section 3 and 4, all changed the language on that particular issue. The second is to clarify that additions to the vaccine schedule that would be required under these laws would have to go through major substantive rulemaking. It would require transparency and make sure that there's a vote in the legislature. We heard a lot of concern that people may be fine with the vaccines that are currently proposed, but they don't want something slipped in the future. I agree that we should have transparency, and we should have a public process. Although we can't bind the hands of any future legislature to take action on it, this would at least allow it to have a public hearing and have a vote in the legislature on the issue, if any are proposed. That is in, I think, Section 1C. Also on the transparency, the third point is requiring a report from the Maine CDC and Health and Human Services Department to submit a report to both the joint standing committees of Education and HHS on matters concerning any new developments in the evaluation of vaccine safety and effectiveness, to make sure that these committees that have jurisdiction are kept appraised of the latest science, new developments, whether at the federal level or state level. And then also in there is the ability for this committee to report out legislation in response to any of those reports. And finally, the last change is, the last intentional change that I had for the amendment was to change the implementation timeline to make the effective date September 1st, 2021, which would be two years out. If this bill were to become law this legislation, this legislative session, it would be effective date two years out from the effective date of this bill. Two years is a long time, and I've had some pushback from the medical community on bumping it out that far. But I think the mission of this bill is to ensure safety of our schools, to give everyone a chance at compliance. Although going from zero to fully in line with the current vaccine schedule wouldn't take a full two years, this would give any families a chance to take a delayed schedule approach if they wanted to. This would also allow for significant rulemaking from the Departments of Education and Health and Human Services to work on language and allow the two legislative sessions to respond before the bill becomes fully implemented. The last piece, which was not intentional, was just cleaning up language that was unallocated before. And you'll see the pieces around students with IEPs that would be, also currently claiming non-medical exemption, that was in the original bill. That came out of discussions with a number of people after I originally started talking about the bill with folks. And this just puts it in a different place in the statute, because it's an ongoing requirement. I just was drafting correctly at the beginning. I think that's it. Did I miss anything?
Thank you very much, Representative. Are there questions for Representative Tipping? Thank you so much. So Ms. Dooling, do you have some information to share with us?
Yes, good morning. My name is Erin Dooling. I'm the analyst typically next door in the Health and Human Services Committee. I'm also an attorney, and we had a similar bill in our committee, which was LD 443, which involved requiring prophylactic eye drops and vitamin K shots to infants at the time of their birth. And then that provision, it also proposed to remove a religious exemption. And so for the Health and Human Services Committee, I did provide a brief overview of kind of the structure of constitutional law that might be applicable to a circumstance that's also generated by LD 798 and your committee. And so if you'd like, I can briefly provide that overview.
Sure.
So I think the most important starting place, you know, sitting as a legislative committee, that's important for you to know, is that if a court is reviewing a statute for constitutionality, that a statute is presumed to be constitutional. And so that is the starting place in a review. The person who is challenging the statute would then have the burden of proving that the statute is unconstitutional. But as a co-equal branch of government, you enjoy that presumption, that legislation that you enact is constitutional. When a court is reviewing a claim that a statute infringes on a constitutional liberty interest, which I'll go over in a minute, the court would look, kind of balance, do a balancing test. They would look at what is the constitutional liberty interest that's affected and balance it against the state interests in having a provision that might affect that interest. And so certainly in the public hea, I didn't sit through this public hearing, but in the public hearing on the vitamin K bill, some of the constitutional liberty interests that were raised were a right to privacy, that it would protect, that protects an individual against unwarranted governmental intrusion into matters that fundamentally affect a person, the free exercise of religion, that no, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, which also applies to state law, and the right to parent as well, that the private liberty interest of a right to parent is the care, custody, and control of their children, which is perhaps the, quoting from a Supreme Court case, perhaps the oldest of the fundamental liberty interests recognized. And so those are potentially claims that might be made in this context. A court would balance those constitutional interests against what the state's interest is in passing that legislation. And the source of that authority is the state's police power, which is the traditional authority of a state, and that actually predates the constitutional authorities. It's the inherent powers of a state that they didn't, that the state did not give up when it joined the union, the federal government. So a police power of the state is defined as the authority to provide for the public health, safety, and morals of the state. And it's kind of the principle that persons and property are subject to all kinds of restraints and burdens in order to secure the general comfort, health, and prosperity of the state. And so on the one hand, a court would be looking at how does this affect a person individually and their constitutional rights? And on the other hand, they would be looking at what is the state doing in order to protect society kind of at large, to protect their public health, safety, or morals? When a statute would infringe, potentially infringe on a fundamental constitutional right, something called strict scrutiny comes into play. And what that means is that the state must have a compelling interest, which is a higher level, a significant interest in its requirements, and that that requirement must be narrowly tailored, which means that it should be focused on the problem that is sought to be solved. So against that backdrop, I looked at a couple of cases and precedent regarding mandatory immunization requirements. So starting with, as Karen mentioned, there's a map from NCSL that shows that three states have no religious exemptions for school immunizations, and those states are California, Mississippi, I think is MS, can't remember, and West Virginia. And so I looked in those state courts to see if those statutes that do not have the religious exemptions for mandatory school immunizations had been challenged. And in California and West Virginia, there were challenges. There were two cases that were decided in 2018 in California where the court upheld the mandatory vaccination statute. Similarly, there was, in West Virginia in 2011, that statute was also upheld. And in each of those cases, those state courts relied on a couple of decisions of the U.S. Supreme Court that had addressed compulsory immunizations. And these are two older cases. One is Jacobson versus Massachusetts from 1905. The other one is Zook versus King from 1922. And although they're old, they're still good law. They have not been overturned by the U.S. Supreme Court. And so they're still applicable and would likely be something that a court would review in considering in a case such as this. So in Jacobson v. Massachusetts, this is the 1905 case, the first case, there was a requirement that inhabitants of the city be vaccinated for smallpox, and it was challenged on the grounds that the requirement violated this individual's liberty interest to care for his or her own body. And so the court in that case held that Massachusetts upheld that mandatory vaccination requirement for smallpox, stating that the community in self-defense has the right to protect itself against an epidemic which threatens the safety of its members. It also addressed the, kind of, the role of the legislature in adopting legislation such as that, that would allow for a mandatory vaccination requirement. The court said that it basically, quoting, that it would usurp the functions of another branch of government for the court to determine that the mode of protection was unjustified. The court went on to say that, "We must assume that when the statute in question was passed, the legislature of Massachusetts was not unaware of these opposing theories about the effectiveness and the safety of vaccination, and was compelled of necessity to choose between them, that as for the legislative department, to determine in light of all the information it had or could obtain." And so that's also something, in terms of thinking about your role as a legislature, that, you know, you do this every day, and bills that come before you as you evaluate information that's in front of you... and choose, as a policy, what you believe is the best way forward. The other case is the 1922 case, Zook v. King. There was a requirement that no child or person should attend a public school or other place of education without proof of vaccination. It was challenged on due process and equal protection grounds. And it relied on Jacobson, the Jacobson case, saying that that case had settled, that it was within the state's police power to provide for compulsory vaccination. And so I guess, thinking about the way the court, in particular, the Supreme Court, looked at its analysis of the required vaccines, looking at the state courts that have reviewed the challenges to its mandatory vaccination statutes, and also other cases that I haven't cited that have reviewed challenges, in particular, to someone's free exercise of religion. I prepared that last page of the bill analysis that Karen mentioned, just kind of an overview of what are the potential factors that a court might consider in, as part of that balancing test when they evaluate a constitutional challenge. And so I'll just quickly go through them.
I'm sorry, what's the color?
It's white. It's the very last page.
Okay, thank you. I've been writing all over.
So one of them they would look at is the statute neutral. Is it directed at a particular speech or religion? Does the statute have general applicability? Meaning, are people treated equally under the law? Or does it apply to certain people and not others? What is the reason for the requirement? The importance of the particular health problem that's sought to be remedied? What is the effect if that health problem is not remedied? How effective and safety is the treatment or procedure? What is the treatment or procedure? I'm sorry, who does the treatment or procedure protect? Are we looking at protecting children, third persons, the state, society? And the availability of alternative measures to accomplish the goal? And then also the extent of the effect that that requirement would have on the constitutionally protected liberty interests, privacy, right to education, religion, right to parent, whatever? And the importance of that particular aspect of the liberty interests affected? And so I think that, you know, it would be, it's impossible to know, you know, 100% how a court would come out on a particular challenge. But I think that this is an overview of maybe the types of factors that a court would consider and precedent that they might rely on in reviewing such a challenge. And some of those factors might inform some of your discussion today. And so I wanted to provide that to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dooling. Much appreciated.